Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 1, City of Uniontown Council, Regular Council Meeting.
Mr. Gaddy?
Here.
Mr. Vasaki?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a special guest this evening, Mr. Mitch Samick from the Court Appointed Special Advocate CASA. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me come this afternoon and talk for a few minutes about a new program here in Uniontown that also serves Fayette County. So, I am the Director of CASA, as Court Appointed Special Advocates. The principle behind that program is that we recruit and train community members to be volunteers to advocate for the best interests of individuals and children specifically, who have been abused and neglected. They're placed in the foster care system, and they also have legal involvement. So, our advocates basically go out into the homes, they're ensuring that the children's needs are being met while they're in custody, and pretty much that they're not being lost while they're in the system. Our advocates usually stay on a case from the time they're assigned throughout the life of that to whatever the outcome might be. So whether it's an adoption or reunification, they are, the advocates are a consistent part of that child's life. To be an advocate with us, you, basically, you just have to be 21 or older. As long as you meet that requirement, you go through our training process, our vetting process, so there are clearances and things like that involved, an interview, and like I said, a training. Our training consists of about 30 hours to where you can come in, kind of learn enough about the human services system, that you can focus and be a part of that child's case while they're involved with child welfare. As far as support goes, currently, as I mentioned, it is a new program here in the county. We just started beginning of May, so currently, I'm recruiting advocates. So if anybody knows anyone who would be interested in volunteering for the program, you can get ahold of me, we are on Facebook at CASA Fayette County. We also have a website, casafayette.org. So if you're interested or know anyone, again, please feel free to pass that along. We also can recruit, we can also train, and I'm also recruiting and training donors and sponsors as well. So there's always that part of the program that comes into play if, you know, you're not maybe interested in volunteering. So there's a lot of different ways that this program can be supported by individuals in the community. So with that, that's pretty much what the program is. We're in 39 South Beeson. So anybody that wants to stop by and say hi, I sit there by myself all day because I'm the only staff person, so it gets kind of lonely. So you're all invited by, just to stop in. So again, thank you for allowing me to come.
A question for you.
Yeah.
If someone volunteered to work like a regular night, five days a Friday, is there still a way to do that, or is that kind of a tough one?
No, it's possible. So I did work in the Westmoreland County Program for about seven years, and I had a lot of advocates who worked full-time positions. The one thing that there is a court, you do attend court hearings, however, if you do work a full-time position, that's something, you're supported by staff. So right now, it's me. And pretty much what we would do is, we would go to the hearing, if you work and can't get off for that hearing, I would be there anyway. You would have a report, like we do do court reports, and you would submit that to the court ahead of time, and then I would kind of be there to supplement that, if you as a advocate can't be there.
So you don't limit it to people that don't have one.
Right, yeah, yeah. The typical, the typical advocate for our program will usually do about eight to 10 hours a month. However, it's all case-dependent. So if you have a case that requires more time, if you're able to do that, that's fine. But you, like I said, you also have staff support, so if you can't, you know, there's other ways we can work around that. So we're flexible.
Good, so it's open.
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all again.
Well, thank you. I have brought a special guest of my own this evening, Mr. Joe Walkus. I don't see you, oh, there's Joe. Would you make your way up to the podium, please, sir?
Thanks for having me, Mayor and Council. For yous who don't know me, I'm Joe Walkus. I've been taking care of Bailey Park for about three years now. I just wanted to come and give you guys a monthly update on what we do at the park and our future plans. But before I do that, I'd like to thank John with the Sewer Department for moving our light pole out of the way for the fire department. It's a lot easier to cut the grass now, don't have to do so much weed whacking. I'd like to thank Matt George with Bright Strike for the wonderful job he did on our basketball court, reseal coating it. Hopefully, within about a week, our hoops will be up. Our electrician, Jeff Langley, is going to work on our lights, and hopefully, by the end of the month, we're playing basketball back at Bailey Park again. To my report, for the month of June, we've, or we hired our pick workers. They approximately worked 45 hours this week, or this month due to vacationing. We cut the park six times, weed whacked about four, we took in $170 in concession, used about 22 gallons of fuel. We do our trash pickup every Tuesday and Friday, depending on if we have events. We drag our fields every two to three days. And just to let you guys know, we're having a Community Day on August 31st. If anybody would like to come, it's open to the public. We're giving out book bags, full school supplies to the kids. There'll be free food, bounce house, entertainment. We're working on getting some other vendors there. And if anybody got any questions about Bailey Park or in its future plans, please let us know. I would also like to thank the 14 people that showed up this last Sunday, the 27th, for Cleanup Day. There was 14 people. We removed approximately six trees completely, trimmed some back, we topped a few, and we also took out about 16 loads of debris between branches, garbage, leaves, and all that. So we're making progress, and if there's any questions, feel free to ask. Thanks for your time.
Joe, real quick, the basketball courts at Bailey Park?
Yes.
Did we get those resurfaced?
Yes. Matt, Matt, Matt resealed them. We're ready to go, we're going to paint lines and put the hoops up next week.
Very good. Thanks for all your hard work, Joe. Really appreciate what you do for the city.
Thank you.
If anybody hasn't gone to Bailey Park and seen the field, I would actually do so. It's never looked so good, and I'm very proud of Joe for all the hard work he's putting in down there. It's really a labor of love for him and the people who work with him, and I'm very thankful for him and the volunteers. Joe and I talk every day, and Joe does great work. I went down, saw the trees that were down, I just couldn't believe these trees he cleared out down there, and he has great plans for it, and so we're, Mayor's involved, it's a great thing.
And I believe we're going to have youth soccer there pretty soon, right?
Yeah, we're working on a soccer field as well, so.
I know it's been a slow process, but trust me, it will get finished, and we'll have one of the nicest parks in the county.
I'm sure of that, Joe. Joe, I think you have a question for someone?
Yes.
What time is Community Day on Thursday, do we have?
I believe it'll start at noon and end approximately 6 o'clock. There'll be more on, online event, like a community page is getting, ready to get put up, there'll be some flyers going out, and we'll keep you informed of all the events and stuff that are going to go on that day.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
An executive session was held at 4 o'clock this afternoon for contract discussions. Before we move any further, I just want to make everyone aware that the way we conduct our meetings, all the rules were posted on the doors, and if you have any questions, read those, and if you have any questions, ask us, and we'd be happy to answer those questions. Any comments on agenda items only? If not, Monthly Treasurers Report, Ms. Hodge?
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. To follow up on my June Monthly Report about the RAC system, I have spoken with Solicitor Witt, and he plans to discuss it further with Mayor and Council. Even though I have implemented a process to help our taxpayers, we are doing everything possible to achieve that goal. There were additional incidents, as indicated before, everyone may not understand the process, but I'm available to discuss any concerns that may arise. Every year, the tax collectors are to send out reminders to those taxpayers who haven't paid their tax bills. In the past, this was done in December. However, I found out that the city reminders are to be mailed out by July 1st, according to the PH State Tax Collectors Association. We did it correctly this year, and we anticipate a speedy response by our taxpayers. Please remember that the Treasurer's Office is open for your convenience from 7:45 to 3:45 p.m., Monday through Friday, to make your payments. After 3:00 p.m., we will not accept cash, however, a payment still can be received. If you need to come in after 3:45 p.m., please call my office to make an arrangement, or use the drop box outside the main entrance to make your payment. We are currently finishing the totals for the collections of March through June. Unfortunately, we ran into a few minor issues, but we are working diligently with the RAC system and the RAC Association's company to get this resolved quickly as possible. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact my office at 724-430-2905, or you can email me at ahodge@atlanticbbn.net, or utcitytreasurhodge@gmail.com. So we've worked diligently, I've been in contact with Tim, and I would like to thank Mr. Vasaki, because he took the time out to come into my office and talk with me last week. And I made an error, I left something in the safe, I took it to the bank the next day, but we got it together. Sometimes my office is very busy because I have people calling in. We have tax certs, we get about 15, 16 tax certs a day, and sometimes they're wrong, sometimes they're not right, we have to send them back. So I do thank Steve for coming in to see what our process is. The door is open for him at any time, and anybody else who wants to come in. Mayor, you come in a lot, you see what we're doing, so we appreciate that. Does Council have any questions?
I appreciate the invitation as well.
No problem.
Now, I want to ask you something about the breach.
Okay.
Now, has there been, like, have you guys notified the police or anything? Has there been, you know, I mean, because if that's a breach, or, you know, deposits, has there been, like, a piece of court file?
Well, Tim is aware of it, and Jason, he was, we talked with Witt today, so Solicitor Witt is going to handle it from here on.
Oh, okay.
So he'll be in touch with you on what their next process and steps are.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Antonio, with the breach, his last meeting, you said there was a breach?
Yes.
What do you, what's your interpretation of a breach? Like, what do you mean, you mean somebody came in there and soaked stuff?
Somebody was going into the system, changing the payment. So we received them, we processed them, and like, two or three weeks later, somebody's unchecking them, or they're putting them in a credit card, but there could be system error, it could have been. What he said to me today, Tim, do you mind if I, go ahead?
No, no, go ahead.
It's not a RAC system issue. Their software, they have checked everything, we now have to look at our server issues. And so that's what Tim's going to talk with you about. It's something to do with our server.
So you think the breach may have been local?
Yes, in our server. Yes. So Tim has more information, we're going to find out what RAC, what the next steps are to how we get to it and figure out what it was, and who did, who did what? We don't know. It could just be a server issue, didn't save, we don't know. But Tim's going to speak with RAC, and we're going to get it resolved.
So you think that, in your opinion, you think that some human person?
Yeah.
That's pretty serious.
Yes, it is.
Have the deleted ones been fixed, like you live?
Yeah, we fixed it. I had to get bank records, I had to pull the tickets. We're thinking about, we may have to take everything out of the system and go back in and add everybody in. I'm not sure how we're going to proceed, but I'm going to follow the solicitor's advice on how we go forward.
So you mean they were to rectify?
Yes, yes.
And to clarify too, nobody's financial information, taxpayers' financial information was not provided, was not disclosed, or released, or leaked, or anything like that?
No, it's just some, it's, you go into the system, so when somebody comes in to pay, we go in the system, we check them off, we can print a report, give them a receipt. A month, a couple weeks later, that person that we went in on July, say, yesterday. So I went in there today, it's not there, it wasn't paid. But they came in, and we have a receipt, and they have a receipt. And that's what happened to us at the end of the year, last year too.
And that's how you're able to fix it?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Ms. Marshall?
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the report as a treasure for the month of June 2021, be and the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the June 3, 2021 Regular Council Meeting, be and the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products pursued for the City of Uniontown for June 2021 invoices. In the General Fund, $87,479.64. Sewer Fund, $11,006.98. Recreation, $2,841.47. Highway, $706.44. Recycling, $20.13. Library Fund, $30,075.67. Community Development, $87.60. Offstreet, $11,164.63. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize a refund to the following taxpayer for real estate taxes. Taxes were paid May 14, 2021. The property was reassessed due to fire damage. Refund amount due is $1,284.68 to William and Angie Morris. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into professional services agreement for a comprehensive plan for the City of Uniontown, pending review of approval by the city solicitor. We had two proposals, one for Mackin, and what about the other one?
Gibson Thomas.
Gibson Thomas. Would someone like to make a motion for one of the other?
I'd make a motion to, for Gibson Thomas.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into professional services agreement for a comprehensive plan for the City of Uniontown with Gibson Thompson Engineering pending review and approval by the city solicitor. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Tim, did you want to just explain, like you did the last meeting, about the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, certainly. So comprehensive plan is an instrument that the city has available to it. It's actually required under the Municipality's Planning Code, and it's an opportunity for the city to look at what its vision is for the future. So typically, ideally, you want to have a comprehensive plan that's updated every 10 years. It's been a while since Uniontown's been updated, which is why Council wants to go through the process now. A comprehensive plan typically incorporates a lot of different elements. So, you know, it obviously looks at economic development, and what can be done to support, promote economic development that's very specifically tailored to the City of Uniontown and the kind of economic development you would be looking for here in the city. It also looks at recreation opportunities, so obviously, the Sheepskin Trail and city parks will feature prominently in that comprehensive plan. It looks at housing, and housing availability, and housing stock, and what can be done to both improve the housing stock and housing availability and housing accessibility throughout the city. Those are some of the key points. There's a lot, like I said, that goes through that. It's a very public process. So at different points throughout the entire comprehensive plan process, the city officials and residents actually will be asked to contribute and submit ideas and provide discussion and some thought throughout that process too. So don't, don't be surprised if, you know, citizens are solicited for some public comment on that at different points, but it's not a quick process. So this is something that will obviously take the city some time to do the right way, and it's committed to doing it that way. So it will take some time, but that's generally what a comprehensive plan is for, once again, required under the Municipality's Planning Code.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for City of Uniontown Pension Investment Advisor Custodian Services for the Fire and Police Pension Plan. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to introduce Bill Number 1750, Proposed Ordinance Number 1730, an ordinance of Uniontown City, Fayette County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, electing to amend its non-uniform pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System pursuant to Article 4 of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law, agreeing to be bound by all provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law as amended and as applicable to member municipalities. It is hereby ordained by Uniontown City, Fayette County, as presented, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt that proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of City Council on August 5, 2021. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize restoring water service and defer sewage payment of $551.53 to Thomas Shazback for his commercial building located at 120 East Penn Street, Uniontown, due to his belief there is a clerical error and the bill was previously paid. City of Uniontown Civilian's Office records reflect $551.53 is past due. Mr. Shuhon?
Again, this is just to defer his payment for now, correct?
Mr. Gaddy?
No.
Mr. Vasaki?
No.
Mr. Palumbo?
No.
Mayor Gurke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into a new municipal sewer shut-off agreement with Pennsylvania American Water for non-residential landlord-rate payer shut-off due to increased cost imposed by PA American Water for residential landlord-rate payer shut-off. This is to authorize the increased cost as follows. Multidwelling properties, two or more units, $150 for each shut-off, includes $30 for reconnection fee. Single-dwelling property, $105 for each shut-off, includes $30 reconnection fee. Class purpose the middle, if the certified mail signed card is not returned, is $75. The city will implement these new fees and continue to charge an additional $40 for administration fee. I did want to make note that these, all of these increases in fees are imposed by the new agreement of American Water, because now they'll be doing these shut-offs for these residential landlord rate payers. Our fees will remain the same as what they were before.
So this is exclusively just to cover the city's costs and make sure that it's not losing?
Right, exactly. Because they charge us that in order to pass it on to them. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
I'm going to abstain from this, it's my employer.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke? Mayor, these next three resolutions are ones that we had last month, will be certain vehicles that were bid out, and we didn't receive bids, so we reposted them on our bulletin board and on the city website, and I did receive two bids, I don't know which vehicle's
Can't just assume they're going to ask for a sweeper, it's a classic.
Who doesn't want one?
Classic plates.
This is a bid on the 96 Ford Super Duty diesel tool truck for $1,075. And this is a bid on the 1999 one-ton dump truck in an amount of $850. Those were both submitted by Joe Walkus. These are from Specialty Metals. The 96 Ford Dump Truck, $1,051. The Chevy Dump Truck, $801. And the Elgin Sweeper, $1,250. Were those these two?
Yep, those were the ones.
Poor Sweeper.
Okay, so for the 96 Ford Super Duty, what was the high bid?
Joe Walkus.
What was the amount?
He also had the high bid on the Chevy Dump Truck, $850. And then the Sweeper, specialty of the industry.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion for the, to accept the high bid for the 1996 Ford Super Duty Tool Truck in the amount of $1,075?
I'll make a motion.
Is that Mr. Palumbo?
I'll second it.
Just to confirm, that amount was $1,075?
Yes. This is the high bid.
That, that's the amount that you read?
Yes.
I wanted to make sure the motion reflected that number right.
$1,075, I'll read it. That was, Mr. Shuhon, the second? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the bid of Joe Walkus in the amount of $1,075. Walkus in the amount of $1,075 for the 1996 Ford Super Duty Tool Truck. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
The next resolution is for the Elgin Sweeper. Should I have a motion to accept the high bid of $1,250 from Specialty Metals?
I'll motion. I'll second that, too, Kim.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to accept the bid of Specialty Metals in the amount of $1,250 for the 1989 Elgin Sweeper. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
No.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
No.
And the last one was for the 1999 Chevy one-ton dump. So, I have a motion for the high bid of $850.
I'll motion.
I'll second that, too, Kim.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve the bid of Joe Walkus in the amount of $850 for 1999 Chevy one-ton Dump Truck. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to appoint Dylan Sullivan to the Uniontown Downtown Business District Authority to fill the unexpired term of John Salireau, term to expire 12/31/24. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize the Bailey Park Use Agreement for use of the park by a local community group on July 16th, 2021, as presented. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yeah, just for public, no, just as Gina Jenkins of, it's just the United Community Art Crawl. So, it's a positive community event there. Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown that the following fees and charges in connection with the rental license or usage of city ballfields, parks, and concession stands be scheduled attached hereto. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to ratify hiring Miles Jackson June 8th, 2021, part-time in Parks and Recreation and salary of minimum wage. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown that the baseball player senior project of Bailey Park renovation of then seniors Tyler Mayers, Dante O'Connell, Aaron Littman, Joe Suprich, and Josh Nypal will be commemorated with a plaque. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes, these kids put a lot of time and effort into that park at that time, and they deserve to be commemorated.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to name Bailey Park Little League Field as the Dicey Simon Field. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes, this is a long time coming. I want to thank Mr. Mark John for helping getting this thing done. Appreciate it. Dicey Simon is a longtime lover of the field and spent a lot of time down there developing it in the early days of the baseball leagues down there. It made a lot of differences in kids' lives, so, yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, he helped a lot of children down there, especially, I was one of them, went through the nine, 10, 11-year-old leagues. He was also a teacher at St. Joseph's. Some of you didn't know that. He was a great teacher, both in the classroom and outside the classroom. So, this is a great dedication to a great man from Uniontown.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize demolition of the old concession stand in Bailey Park. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize a separate bank account be opened for COVID-19 recovery ARP stimulus funds at United Bank. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Hey, Tim, you want to explain why we do have to set that up?
Yeah, so, these are the stimulus funds that would have been, were coming to the city under the American Rescue Plan. So, these are funds specifically designated for the city. They're, all municipalities across the country are receiving these funds. It's based on your census figures. And so, these funds need to be separately accounted for because there will be ongoing accounts and audits that have to be provided to the state and federal governments for these funds. So, in order to ensure that the auditing process is easily completed with respect to these funds, it's my recommendation that they be put into a separate fund so they're more easily tracked for that audit purpose. So.
Thank you.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to enter into an agreement by and between Vincent Johnson LLC, DBA De Marcos, Bistro, and Cantina and the city of Uniontown to hold an event in relation to its business for the public within the city of Uniontown and to make available certain public parking and other areas available for said event. Agreement attached hereto. The date for the event is Friday, September 10th, from 4:00 p.m. until noon. Saturday, September 11th, from 12:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. And Sunday, September 12th, from 12:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. And Friday, October 8th, from 4:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. Saturday, October 9th, from 12:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. And Sunday, October 10th, from 12:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to approve pay signed sponsorship for the Grand Street Park Basketball Tournament Summer Season. All sponsorship monies may payable to the city of Uniontown. Mr. Palumbo?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to authorize Uniontown Community Development Coordinator Mark John to apply for Bayett County for LSA monies for use for the city's comprehensive plan. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within states' rights of way. The city of Uniontown wishes to allow banners or signs relative to regional or local functions or charitable affairs. This is for approval of an overhead banner for St. George Food Festival starting July 29th. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Food Festival, I'm in, yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Uniontown to appoint Kendall Sisler to the Uniontown Redevelopment Authority Board for a five-year term to fill the expired term of Doug Miller, term July 1, 2021 through July 1, 2026. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Monthly reports, Uniontown Code Enforcement Officer, Mr. Thomas.
Hey, good evening. For the month of June, we logged in 36 new cases, completed 24 positively. I have 46 ongoing cases carrying over from June into July, and unfortunately, I have 22 complaints sitting in my office that have not been logged in yet because I just haven't had resources to get to them. So, I'm going to go into July with a backlog of 66 cases, when you add the ongoing plus the not logged in. But we'll get it done. I think last year, July and August, I was about 60, 70 case backlog, but people didn't know we had a code officer. So, now it's just starting a little early. July 31st, we're going to have a community cleanup day. This is the second one we've had. It will be the second one. The public is more than invited to come out and help. If you'd like to volunteer, please call City Hall and get your name on the list. If you have things that need picked up, we'll try to accommodate, taking care of that as well. If you know places that need cleaned up, call, we'll try to accommodate that as well. That all said, it's going to only be as successful as we have volunteers. If it's five people show up on July 31st, you know, if it's myself, the mayor, Laura, and the police chief, and the fire chief, we're not going to get nearly as much done as if we have 40 people show up. So, public input and public volunteerism will be a big part of our success in getting this done. But I just want to let everybody know, July 31 will be another cleanup day for the city. Any questions?
You're saying people can call in, you can maybe help people with the call-in themselves that has, what do you accept, that type of thing? Is there a limit that, you know?
I mean theoretically, we're not a moving company, nor are we a disposal company. But if you have items that you cannot get rid of and you do not have means to get them to a recycling center, you know, if I pull up in your, if I pull up in a truck and you're sitting there in your pool having a beer and you have a one-ton truck in your driveway, I'm probably going to tell you, "Take care of it yourself or I'll find you next week." Okay, if you're 78 years old and you have a refrigerator that went bad, yeah, I'll help you. And, you know, I think people need to use common sense, which kind of runs short a lot of times. No, it's a good question, good question. I mean Buck, I mean Buck probably moved a lot. I mean, he had a, he had a full-size truck and a trailer, and he had sideboards on the trailer and the truck, and he loaded it all the way every trip. And he and his crew just ran and ran and ran all day last cleanup. And then sadly, a week later, you couldn't tell we did anything. But that is that, too. Any other questions? All right, thanks. I guess I would, again, I, you know, we've got all this backlog and all this, you know, a lot to do here. And I've said it before, I will say it again. I'd be remiss if I didn't say it again. What are, you know, I completed 24 cases in the month of June. That was not done in a vacuum. I had the full help and support of the police department, the fire department, the street department, they helped. The mayor's office, down, you know, the front office, the sewage department. Tim, Tim and I communicate well after hours, even on the weekends when I have issues. So, you know, what little accomplishments I've had, those 24 cases, was done with a lot of, a lot of help from a lot of people. It just wasn't done by myself. So, I don't want to, I don't want to be, you know, take all the credit. A lot of people helped us get where we're at. And I'd be remiss K2 Engineering. They lend a lot of support when we need it as well. So, it's not done in a vacuum. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks for your hard work, Matt. Always appreciate it. Uniontown Fire Department, Chief Buck, Joe?
For the month of June, the Fire Department answered 82 calls. 12 were fire-related. 25 motor vehicle accidents they responded to. There were five rescue and extracations. There were six electrical issues. Three of them were electrical issues. Three were power lines that were down. They also responded to 19 different assorted government and public service calls, and they had 11 false alarms. Along with that, we had one building or structure weakened or collapsed. What happened on the Bryson's, on the front of Bryson's Building, the facade fell down to the sidewalk area. Thankfully, no one was hurt. That was one incident there. One animal issue they responded to. They also had one carbon monoxide detector activation that they responded to, and one flood assessment. So, that was a total of 82 calls. Again, I thank Buck Griffith, our chief, and his lieutenant, Scott Kahn, and the rest of the firefighters for their help in protecting our city. Thank you, Buck.
Thank you. I really don't have a whole lot to add, other than the civil service exam was completed for the, to hire another firefighter. We won't have the results back from that until the civil service board meeting is on July 7th, and we'll have the scores then. It'll be back to you in August to certify the report. We'll need to hire somebody. My last day's supposed to be January 1st, so we need to get everything back in order. We have everything in order by then. The July 31 cleanup, Matt, you can depend on us, we'll be there. We had a couple breakdowns and everything, equipment, not broke down, just needed repairs. So, they, everything's up and running now. Just this afternoon, we had to put a new sump pump in East End Station. Something happened up there, it quit, and we had water backing up in the basement. So, motor had burned up. It's only 21 years old, so I guess it was, it was time. So, you know, that's all I got. Anybody has anything to add, questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Buck, and thank you to your whole department. Thank you. Police Department, Chief Cox?
Good evening. During the month of June, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 852 calls for service. During the month of June, the Uniontown Police Department responded to eight-hundred-and-fifty-two calls for service. Breakdown, some of those calls includes twenty-one vehicle accidents, nine assaults, three burglaries, fifteen criminal mischiefs. I could provide you the copy if you'd like. Sure. Three burglaries, fifteen criminal mischiefs, fourteen disturbances, thirty-four domestics, three drug offenses, twelve fire calls, fifteen harassments, two public intoxications, twenty disorderly conducts, twenty-eight emergency medical assists, fourteen shots fired, calls thirteen overdoses, four of which required Narcan use from officers, forty-four suspicious activities, six suspicious persons, twenty-eight thefts, and served twelve warrants. Officers made a total of twenty criminal arrests, issued, I believe, fifteen non-traffic citations and ten traffic citations. Officers also conducted numerous vehicle and foot patrols in the, along the Sheepskin Trail and in various areas within the city limits. As many of you know, over the last month, we've had a huge rise in shootings within and around the City of Uniontown. Two of which ended up being homicides, we have a third person that at last check was in grave condition. As a result of those instances, we, the, on the investigative side, we've met with the Pennsylvania State Police, reviewed the cases together so that we could go over commonalities in regards to individuals and the investigative process of determining who might have been present. On the community side of things, it's, you know, very, we're very fortunate. Within a day or so after those events, I received calls from Pastor Al Thompson, Pastor Winfrey, Doug Wright, all within the community, just basically saying, hey, how can we help? A couple days later, our first meeting was, community meeting was scheduled in Mount Olive Church, they requested that the mayor and I attended. The mayor and I attended that meeting where we, actually, we did a lot of listening, I mean, there was a, the community that was represented there had a lot of suggestions on their own behalf of things that they can do to help us within the community. Because at the end of the day, from a law enforcement standpoint, the community is the eyes and ears. We typically respond after the fact, and we can investigate what happened, but we need the community to be the eyes and the ears that help us bring these things to a resolution. And so it was just refreshing to be a part of that meeting. They had a second meeting that, last Thursday, and are working on various things within the community to help and mentor and be a positive impact within the community. So, we are working diligently to try to bring this to an end and do good things to, provide an environment where these kids have an opportunity to have programs within the community that they can, that can keep their attention and do things rather than turning to, you know, violence in the street, if you will. So we, we really appreciate the support from the community. That's it, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, always thank you for your service.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Director of Public Works, Mr. Potelinski?
Good evening. For this month, the Sewer Department took in a total of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents, bringing the total up to a little over one-point-one million. As far as the Sewer Department, we've been working closely along with a contractor for the water company to help refinish some of the road on Morgantown Street. We've been redoing our manholes there, and they've agreed to work with us on the resurfacing around our manholes that we bust out. So, it's always good to build a relationship with a contractor that's gonna be working in the area, and we have a good relationship with the water company, and it all works out well. The compost site, we had to have a technician come in and adjust a few things on the beast. It's an expensive piece of equipment and demands a lot of attention, so fixes aren't cheap on it, but it's run hard and it's run almost every day to keep up with the demand of the recyclable material. The street department, we just sold the one old sweeper, our newer sweeper we have is also fairly old. They're always adjusting it and tweaking stuff on a daily basis with small breakdowns and stuff. Really need to look into some way of fundings for a new one, I know they're not cheap, but it's keep nickel and dimeing us here. Other than that, it's really all I have.
We have a lot of time to talk about a beast, why don't you explain this real quick so people know what the?
The beast is a giant chipping machine, pretty much. You can take a thirty-six-inch log and it'll spit it out into wood chips. New would cost approximately eight-hundred-thousand dollars. We're in partnership with South Union Township, they truck all their lawn debris to us and we compost it up. Local business comes and takes practically all the material we have, otherwise we'd have mountains of it. But, yeah, it's from Union Town, South Union. Like I said, it's a daily operation. A lot of times, it calls for more than one guy, but we try to keep up with it as best we can.
Maintenance on something like that, preventive maintenance, maybe it's extremely important, if you have a expensive beast, put it down there, ask them anything for us.
Yeah, like I said, nothing's cheap on it.
No. Appreciate this, Matt.
Thanks, John, always appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, John.
Uniontown Redevelopment Authority, anyone here to give a report for the redevelopment authority? If not, we'll move on to the Uniontown Community Development Coordinator Report, Mr. John? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to start with some additions to Mr. Walkus's report on Bailey Park. And first and foremost, Joe, thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you do at Bailey and everything you've done for the last three years. And as Councilman Palumbo pointed out, it is in some of the best condition that it has been in quite some time. So those efforts that you put forth are certainly recognized. We recently met with a group of people, some potential funding sources and volunteers to develop a site plan for the entire park, because it does need some work still, it lies ahead of us. And we will be asking K-2 and Mr. Over for their help with this site plan, seeking out their knowledge and the equipment that they have available to them. And together, I think we can come up with some sort of site plan that's got the basketball court, the pickleball court, the tennis court, the soccer fields that we're talking about. Everything that we would like to see happen back at Bailey Park that a lot of us remember from when we were young. And we welcome and encourage resident participation with that site plan, because again, it's gonna benefit the entire community, not just a handful of people. So if anybody is interested in, any residents interested in participation, you can email me at mjohn@uniontowncity.com with any questions, comments, or anything else. We anticipate soliciting bids for the three concrete pads that need to be poured for standing the three down light poles. And we have recently had two electrical contractors looking at providing estimates for retrofitting all six light poles with LED lighting. And it was also brought to our attention by some local residents that cars and trucks can still proceed through Bailey Park. So Bollard or some sort of chain preventing cars and trucks getting into Bailey Park on that back end where I think Chief Cox often says, they find people there under that pavilion. And with young children playing in the park, we want to eliminate any kind of car traffic, so maybe that's something we could look at in the near future. Nine oh-two recycling grant update. I recently met with Sheila Shea, she is the Director of Recycling for Fayette County, to obtain information on writing this grant. Ms. Shea is setting up a meeting with myself and Mr. Jester, Bill Jester, who is our DEP representative from the area. And this is a required meeting that must take place in order to begin the application process, which was previously voted on or approved by council. We will be applying for funding to cover the cost of the recycling containers for residents and business owners in the city, as well as larger recycling receptacles to be placed in and around the city. And we are also looking into the possibility of securing funding to purchase additional equipment. As Johnny said, some of his crew's equipment is outdated, so we'll be looking at using this grant application to fund some of that. Even some pipe dreams, like a tire shredder, to turn rubber tires into mulch. And maybe use that as some source of revenue for the city, where we could take recycled tires, turn them into mulch, and bag them up and sell them. Every little bit, every little bit. And that stuff is very expensive, and we have-
People want it, too.
Yeah, we talk about the cleanup days that Matt wants to host on the 31st, how many tires will we take in? And what will we do with these tires? I can't take credit, it was Sheila Shea. But we, there's a lot that lies ahead. And again, Rome wasn't built in a day, and things take a lot of time. And when we get into the Sheepskin Trail portion of things, we will see why things take so much time. But the deadline for this application for the nine oh-two grant is September 24th, so we will be putting that application in quite soon. Updates on the comprehensive plan, thank you council for the vote to hire the team assembled by Gibson Thomas to conduct, complete, and help us implement the comprehensive plan. We feel that they have assembled a well-connected, a well-informed, and a driven team who's got like-minded ideas for the city's future, and they have committed to helping us along the way. It's our hope that funding for the plan will come from multiple sources. We plan on submitting an application through the Municipal Assistance Program, which is a fifty-fifty grant match, as well as applying for the local share account funding. That deadline is August 6th, thank you again for adopting that resolution. The Gibson Thomas team is also committed to assisting with this process, as well as finding other sources of grant funding for this. We have a meeting scheduled next week to discuss the possibility of that LSA funding with one of the county commissioners. And we want to thank the team assembled by Gibson Thomas. This is an exciting time for the City of Union Town, and this is the first step in becoming a stronger, more well-rounded, and a more sustainable community from all aspects. The Fayette County Hazard Mitigation Plan, I was asked by the city clerk to go attend that meeting. And at the Condesville Airport, there were multiple municipalities involved in this meeting, all from the Fayette County area, to assist in developing a hazard mitigation plan, which Fayette County does, if I'm not mistaken, more than we need to, more than what is required by law or statute, if I'm using the right word. A gentleman by the name of Gene Crossley will be compiling the necessary information and data and presenting it to council. Sheepskin Trail Updates. As of July 1st, 2021, that is today, the Public Utilities Commission has not signed over the rights of way along the abandoned railway through the city. This is a disappointment, but we also kind of anticipated this coming, so we are starting to take some additional steps and contact the PUC in the most professional manner that we can, using the most professional contacts that we can, as to not agitate them in any way, shape, or form. Because this is the one step that's holding us back, and we don't want to, again, agitate them, but at the same time, we have to let them know that they are impeding the progress of our healthy lifestyle, of a lifestyle that is years in the making, that everybody in the community wants to see. And if there is somebody in the community that doesn't wanna see this Sheepskin Trail come through the City of Union Town, please contact me personally, please come to City Hall and set up a meeting so we can discuss why this may be. In anticipation of the neglect of the PUC, we've reached out to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and their timely response suggested we reach back out to them if we haven't heard back from the PUC by July 9th. Quite frankly, I was surprised at the timely response by the Lieutenant Governor's Office, they responded within, I wanna say, two days' time. So at least they, we know that they are listening to us and hearing us. Representatives from the Industrial Heartland Trails Coalition also committed help with the PUC, as did representatives from the Gibson Thomas team, working on our comprehensive plan. The Industrial Heartland Trails Coalition, as well as some of the members of the Gibson Thomas team, who is committed to helping us, have some very close working relationships with some people at the PUC, as well as some very close working relationships with some legislators who can make calls to the PUC. So again, we anticipated this not being signed, expecting the worst, so we are moving forward. While we wait on the PUC, we've continued to work on the following. We're still working on developing businesses along and around the proposed trail, such as ice cream parlors, a bicycle shop, and a barber shop. We met with the Executive Director from the Touchstone Center for Crafts, for installation art to be installed along the trail, as well as murals telling the story of our city lining the trail. On a small tangent, we discussed implementing an artist incubation project in the city, similar to one they've already implemented in Johnstown. Today, we met with Adam Mattis from the DCNR, and Tom Petrus, who's the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Trails, regarding the Greenways Grant that K-2 so generously wrote for us. And we thank you, Mr. Over and Dana Kendrick, for taking care of that grant for us. We remain in constant contact with stakeholders, potential funding sources, and persons of influence on a grander scale. We feel strongly that the team from Gibson Thomas, that council approved to conduct our comprehensive plan, will be major players in the development of not only a plan, but carrying out the duties necessary for the completion of the trail. They have some people in place on this team who have been working on the trail for decades. And they've got some people who, again, know the right people in the right places who can guide us along the way. So we're very confident in the step we've taken today with Gibson Thomas. And we have a meeting next week with our Commissioner, Vince Vasides, to discuss the possibility of moving the fact bus stop. We're currently looking at options of creating a separate bus lane, as it currently sits, the block of Beeson on which the fact terminal sits will not be wide enough for a ten-foot-wide trail, two-way traffic, and a community transit line. So we have some major work to do on that stretch of Beeson Avenue, or Beeson Boulevard, I think it's called. It's like Pittsburgh Street and Pittsburgh Road, at some light they switch. The incubation project, Lauren Yeoman and I met with a local building owner about the possibility of using his space to start this project, and we've also discussed putting the project down on paper so something tangible is in place. Subsequently, we will host meetings with potentially interested candidates. CDBG training is completed, and we are ready as a city to take over CDBG training applications in the fall for the 2022 year. Are there any questions or comments? No? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mr. John, for all your hard work, really appreciate it. Director of Planning and Community Relations, Ms. Kuteck?
Good evening, everyone. It's hard to follow that, but I'm gonna try to wrap it up here. I want to start tonight's topic on a sad note, but it ends with a silver lining, with the recent vandalism at George T. Marshall Plaza. The outpouring of support from the community is heartwarming. Landscaping company Silvis Group and owner Jake Silvis, located in Mount Pleasant, partnered with American Flag, and will present an entire set of flags and ropes to the City of Union Town next Thursday. Funds donated by generous citizens, organizations, and businessnesses will be applied to the yearly flag purchase for years to come. This will defer the cost of nearly nineteen-hundred dollars for the city, so thank you for all that have done that. On behalf of Mayor Gerke, City Council, and myself, we are truly and sincerely grateful for everyone's generosity. Things that have happened in the last month, I would like to congratulate Downtown Kids located at 69 West Main Street on their recent grand opening. It's good to see great things happening in the city. Since our last meeting, we now have a City of Union Town City Hall Facebook page. If you have any questions or would like to contribute, I would appreciate any and all assistance, it is a work in progress, nothing fabulous yet, but give me time. Upcoming and exciting happenings around town, has anyone not heard about the Union Town Birthday Firecracker 5K on Sunday? Anybody not heard about it yet? Okay, good. If you don't wanna walk or run, please, please volunteer, contact me for more details. Blended Reality will be playing after the award ceremony, please bring a blanket or a chair and join us in Story Square on this festive day, also celebrating Union Town's 245th birthday. Same-day registration will begin at 7:30 a.m. in Story Square. At this time, I would like to thank each and every sponsor, volunteer, and participant from making this event possible. Mayor Gerke, would you please join me? This event has a generous Union Town donor who sponsored the Union Town Area School District Class of 2020- Class of 2021, valedictorian and salutatorian for their academic achievements. I am honored to introduce valedictorian Carson Lucy and salutatorian Bridgette White. On behalf of Mayor Gurkey, council members, and myself, we congratulate you on your well-deserved success and wish you the very best in your future. Thank you, girls. Upcoming events to follow the Firecracker 5K, the Fayette Living Well Coalition is hosting Fayette Walks. Look up Uniontown on July 14th at 6:30 p.m. Take a stroll down Main Street and learn about some of the unique structures listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The walk will begin and end at Story Square, and that address is 1 East Main Street. Mayor Gurkey will be giving a brief talk at George C. Marshall Memorial Plaza, located at the intersections of Fayette Street, Mount Vernon Avenue, and Main Street. Another great event, East End Community National Night Out, August 3rd, 4 to 8 p.m. on Austin Street between Collins Avenue, or Collins, and Fallspring Street. Games and activities for the kids, as well as hot dogs and goodies for all. The City of Uniontown, along with Fayette County, will be hosting Remembering 9/11 20 Years Later, looking back on that day that changed America forever. We would like to see involvement with our first responders, government officials, clergy, and anyone who has a story to share. Feel free to contact me with any input. That's all I have. Anyone have any questions?
Firecracker.
Yes.
It's going to be all that work, it's going to be rain or shine, correct?
Oh, yes. Runners like to run and rain. Yes, yes, yes. Van might not play, but we will move forward, walking, running.
Good enough.
Okay.
Good job, Lloyd. Great job.
Thank you. Anything else?
Before we move on to public comments, I'd like for everyone to be respectful of everyone's time. We do have a three-minute time limit to each speaker, so just be respectful of other people's time. So, at this time, we'll take any, if we have any public comment, this is the time for Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Let me first say, I'm kind of disappointed. I asked to be Speaker, because I knew I was going to be more than three minutes, so I hope that you'll indulge me. My name is Carmina Taylor. I'm back after last month. I am the founder of the We Can't Wait PA statewide coalition. I came last month, and I've been involved in advocacy work in Uniontown since February. And it's just funny, because the last time I was here, you talked about unity in the beginning, and today you talked about advocacy. And I came prepared to define the type of advocacy work that I have, that I do and why I do it. And the reason why I have those glasses for you guys is I want you to put on a lens, right? I want you to put on a lens of advocacy. So, let me read the definition. "Social justice advocacy are organized efforts that are aimed to influence public attitudes, policies, laws, and laws to create a more socially just society guided by a vision of human rights that may include awareness of socioeconomic inequities, protection of social rights, as well as racial identity experiences of oppression and spirituality." So, that's why I do this work, right? And so, I want to preface this by saying I have a master's degree in human service. I have a master's degree in education and organizational development, so I know what I'm talking about. And when I listen to the police chief's report and some of the statistics I want to share, there's a human service issue in Johnstown, I mean, in Uniontown. I was in Johnstown yesterday. I want to share some stats with you, right? And in the lens of an advocate and a social justice advocate, this is why I do the work. Uniontown has 70% of its residents that are renters, right? But they contribute to city and school tax. At the Uniontown School District, in terms of attendance, because again, I look in this kind of lens, the school district has an attendance record of 61.7%. The state has an average of 85%. Black students in Union have an attendance rate of 42%, and economically disadvantaged students in Uniontown have an attendance rate of 58%. When you look at a four-year time range for graduation, all the students in Uniontown graduate at 82%, which is below the state average of 86%. Black students make, graduating in four years, and 64%. Black students make up 20% of the student population. When you look at Fayette County, you look at the incarceration rate. Whites have a percentage that is .39. Blacks have a percentage of incarceration rates, which is 13.91. So, when you look at all of those, you kind of look at what's going on crime-wise, and I got this information from Neighborhood Scout. Uniontown, I won't say that one. So, I won't say that, because I don't really want to go there. I won't say that. The thing is, right, is that there's issues.
Ms. Taylor, your time is up now. We'll move on to the next public comment. We have any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Uniontown, the council adjourned to meet Thursday, August 5th, 2021, at 4:30 p.m. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Shulon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Meeting adjourned. Thank you for all coming.
Mr. Vasaki. Do you see how disrespectful that was? And you told me to ask this, because you told me to specifically ask to be a speaker.
Yeah.
And I did, and nobody responded. And...
You want to answer?
But then why didn't I answer? Why didn't you answer about being a special speaker? No, why didn't anybody answer?